Hello and welcome to the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Club Study Session for July 16th, 2025. If you're interested in finding out more information about our study session or our weekly tournament, send us an email to midatlanticbg@gmail.com. Okay, we are ready to play. And if you have, so here's our situation, we are host Crawford. And we've turned the cube, we're three away, which means now we really want a gammon. This is a gammon go situation, a gammon will win the match for us. And we have a five-two to play, so we're just getting, just getting started here. I'll take suggestions, I see in the chat, we had one, 13 to six. Other suggestions? You should be able to unmute yourself now and say something.
What about eight to three, to slot the three point?
Okay, eight to three, and then what are you gonna do?
That's not considered wastage.
Nah, not necessarily. I would, I would say though, that behind the opponent's anchors, you're, you're not so interested in making those points. They're, they're not bad to make, but they're not as important. The points in front of your opponent's anchors.
That's why I would go originally with thirteen to six.
Okay, now.
I like that one.
Okay, now let's come back to your eight to three, if you were gonna play eight to three, what would be your two?
Thirteen eleven.
Okay.
It's indirect that way.
Yeah, right? Okay. Uh, I've got the Slido open, we can vote unless somebody has another move, I, you know, we could throw him like eight to one.
Total wastage.
Yeah, you know, I, I really wanna consider as many plays as possible, even if it, even if it, you know, maybe you feel like they're ridiculous. I don't know, sometimes I've, I've found positions where the play that, that turned out to be the right play was at first glance kind of a really weird looking play. I'm not saying that's the case here, I'm just saying I, I like to keep, keep open-minded about our, our options. Alright, so the votes are coming in now, so get, get your Slido set up and send in a vote, go to slido.com and enter the code 1296.
We are missing thirteen eight, thirteen eleven.
Thirteen eight, thirteen eleven. Certainly a reasonable looking play, okay, I've got it in there now. Yeah, here's thirteen six. Nice looking distribution, here's eight, three, thirteen, eleven. Needs an indirect shot that'll get hit by six, one, five, two, four, three. So will this, will also get hit by the same six numbers. And then, and then there's the option of just dumping a checker to the ace point.
But on the flip side of that thirteen eight thirteen eleven, you have another builder in your outboard.
You do? What would that builder be useful for?
Making seven.
Yeah, ma- making the seven point, the seven point is useful in a holding game. Okay, uh, nobody's voted for anything other, oh, there's a vote for something else. But most of the votes are for thirteen to six, so I think that'll be our play. I like this play, it's, it's kinda got a little bit of everything, good balance, puts a spare back on the six point, which is probably important. Uh, I, I feel pretty confident about this. XG's thinking. Sometimes it gets a little, needs to, needs to boot up a little. Okay, yeah. Okay, thirteen to six, right by a fair amount. Alright, they're starting to crunch, double fours, we had their fours blocked. So what'd they do, they dumped three checkers to the ace point? And then one more to the four. And now we have a four-two to play, so the situation is we're way behind in the race, but we have a little bit better structure.
Um, slot the seven.
Okay, slot the seven. Team the seven, what else should we look at? How about a, how about a safe play like? Eight to two. Don't leave any shot, that's, you know, that's worth considering.
I like that one.
You don't have very many options for those two.
Yeah, we don't really have a ton of great options.
Well, thirteen nine thirteen eleven, it's, I mean, I would never play that, but. Yeah.
That's me.
That's a bit too loose.
Yeah, that's pretty loose, you get hit by all the fives. Four, three, you're asking for it, I think there's a the, whether fifteen.
Directly and indirectly.
Yes, I think seventeen hitters there, that's a lot.
You get a five and two, you're through.
I think we can afford thirteen seven because they have a block in their own board. So, yeah.
It's unfortunate that we can't do this with duplication, right?
Yes.
Too bad, but.
And also we are so behind in the race that we need to do something bold to catch up.
Ah, that's a really good point, we are behind in the race.
If you do, um, if you do thirteen nine, eight, six.
Ah.
That duplicates five for them.
Point that out, yeah, that's gonna duplicate five, that's right.
Whereas thirteen seven gives them a good three, which they don't currently have.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, but the fastest way to get the point you want is to slot it, so, yeah.
Well, at this point, at this point, I wouldn't mind having the nine point instead of the seven point, since they're anchored on the four.
Okay.
More important to block double fives than double threes at this point as far as racing.
Well, yeah, that, that's a good point, yes.
If, if one checker vacates from the four, I can hit it with twos, fours and fives just as well as I can with twos, threes and fours.
Yes, okay, alright. Very interesting.
Okay, I don't know if it's the right play, but it's, it's certainly worth considering.
Absolutely worth considering.
It's better than thirteen nine thirteen eleven, I think.
Yes.
No, that should be considered too, I suppose. I think someone already said that.
How about putting that teaser on the seven, attempt them to break their, uh, their advanced anchor?
Well, do you wanna get hit or not?
No, not really.
Yeah.
Thanks, it's from calls.
Bill Powell, you've got some audio in the background there. Okay, we're voting.
Thirty-three percent, something just changed.
Okay, looks like the votes are, ooh, it's close now, now tied, thirteen, seven and eight to two.
Hey, I, I just, I just got here, Jason, and I haven't.
Bill Spruce in the house.
Yeah, I haven't got the Slido, uh, slot the seven.
Okay, Bill Spruce is gonna break the tie, so here we go, we're gonna.
Okay.
Good job, Bill. Uh, well, I mean, maybe good job, we're gonna find out, right?
I'm usually wrong, so, there's that too.
Oh, no.
Okay, let's go.
Jason, what's the dog's name?
Uh, that was Archie.
Oh, that was perfect. That was a five, one, two, shouldn't we have hit them?
Oh.
Okay, I see.
Bill Powell can, can cash in his.
Yeah, Bill Powell, you get your smug equity, congratulations.
Yes.
Well, point, this wasn't an errors.
We still award smug equity.
Oh, I got, yeah, I, I, I claim it when I can.
Of course, now, yeah, we would not say that Bill Spruce is wrong, but we will award smug equity to Bill Powell, that's just, that's just how we roll. Okay, then what happened? They hit us and came out. We danced, bad times.
I thought we got a five-three.
No, no, we didn't. And then three, one, they covered, and now we have a five-three, oh, look at this, ha, ha, ha.
Yeah.
Let's, what do you say we hit?
Yes.
No, I, I'd rather do, uh, six to three.
Ah, this is interesting. Double fives, it's, it's gotta play well.
Well, I'll be right back, you guys, we gotta go do something.
I guess eight to three twice is a given, then we.
I think eight to three twice is for sure, and we're gonna, we're gonna debate over the last two.
Yes. Then thirteen to eight.
Seventeen.
How about, yeah, how about seventeen twelve, thirteen eight, and then make the three point?
Hmm, yes.
Are we looking, this is the play maybe? So, this, this keeps double fours blocked, that's good.
Hmm.
Uh, they only hit us with four, two and one, two. Don't say those things out loud, that's how your opponent rolls the big jokers.
Okay.
Um, okay, is there any other play that we ought to consider, I'm trying to look around for some alternatives?
Uh, well, somebody said just slot the seven point with the seventeen checker. Like seventeen point checker. And then he was, eight to three twice, and then slot the seven point.
So, this is, this is a pretty bold looking play.
Yes, it is.
If you succeed, you have more ways of making the four point.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, now how many more ways are there for us to get hit here? We get hit on a one-six, four-three, four-four.
So five ways in thirty-six.
Five ways, the other one, if we, okay, if we make the other play, how many ways are there for us to get hit? Uh, four, four to, four ways. So the play that slots the bar point gets hit with one more roll. But let's see how many more builders it has. It has three builders for the four point. So you gotta ask yourself, is it worth giving up one extra shot to get those, get that extra builder?
I would say absolutely.
It might very well be, right? It's, this position is not all about safety. Safety is important, but there are other considerations. Okay, now, let's look at another play, Mike, Mike has thrown in. Mike's thrown in to make the three point with checkers from the thirteen, okay? How many ways are there of getting hit from here? One, three, four, three, one, one, there are five ways of getting hit. But this also only has two builders for the four point. So, I don't know. Tough play. Okay, let's vote, if you have not voted yet, I've got the three options are up there.
I just wanna say, Jason, it's a lovely roll.
It, it is a lovely roll, yes. And the, the downside is, there's a couple of different ways to play it, and, you know, one, you know, one of them is gonna be right, and the other ones may be wrong by a lot. Okay, we've got six votes in, anybody else gonna cast a vote? Uh-oh, we're tied. Don't make Bill Spruce break the tie again.
No, I already voted, so.
Oh, you already voted, oh.
I'm already, I'm already registered in there.
That might make me the tiebreaker, ah, we've got a the horse race is a.
Fifty percent now.
Wow, this is a, this is moving around. Oh. Oh, is that, is that gonna be our final tally? Okay, seventeen twelve, thirteen eight, eight, three, twice. Now, the one advantage that this does have over the other play, oops, I, I clicked on it, so we're, the other, the other advantage is that it, um, only plays with one block. Okay, that was, that was the vote. And it was, yeah, it's very close. Okay, that's cool. That means we can all be right. Okay, they hopped out with a six, one. To luck boxes. Alright, six, two to play.
Thirteen, two, I mean, hit him on this. Hit him and then move to the five.
Okay, so hit and run. Let's see, so that'd be like this. Little bit more dangerous, now they can hit with, uh, some threes, if they enter with a four, three or a one, three.
I don't see any other options.
Um, here's a question, do we have to hit?
No.
Uh, no, but we are in a disadvantage of the race, so we were impelled to hit, compelled.
Yeah, that's kinda what I mean, I mean, does the situation compel us to hit? How do we decide that?
Well, being.
Well, it's more, it's more fun for, for one thing.
Oh, okay, that, that's the number one reason, it's definitely more. And.
What's the no-hit play, twelve to four?
Yeah, I think the no-hit play is twelve to four. Okay, so I'm gonna put that in there.
What if you went twelve to six and then hit six to seven? Or, you can't do that, nevermind.
Nevermind, yeah, okay. Nope. You gotta move that fast.
It's been a long day.
Alright. I think we've got our two candidate plays, so let's vote. Okay, oh, the hitting play's taking a lead. Taking a big lead, alright. The hitting play it is, I think the hitting play is right. White's got a, a handful of return shots, but if we can survive this one, we might be in good shape, and now we've taken a race lead too. Here comes the hit, we're doing it.
And we have builders for if he comes in and can't get out.
Slow down, let's go back.
Oh my god.
Okay, the hit was right by a lot. We did get hit, there was the four, three, that was one of the rolls I mentioned. We danced. They played six, three, buttoned up. And then we rolled five, three, we can't reach, oh, it's just, just short.
Yeah.
What a shame.
But you have to come in.
Alright, so what are we doing with the three?
Twelve-nine.
Twelve-nine, yes.
Twenty to seventeen is the other choice. Okay, the voting is open.
Uh, guys, I just turned on the high, uh, uh, audio filtering that should, uh, remove the background voice, can you still hear it?
Just barely.
Oh, is that, is that bad?
No, I, it's, it's very, very low, but I can hear it, but just it's very low. Okay, twelve-nine it is.
Yeah. Yeah, so for future reference, there's an options in the audio settings of Zoom, uh, sorry, yeah, Zoom, that we are, that, that you can turn on voice filtering.
Ah.
Background, filtering voice.
Alright, twelve-nine, definitely right by a lot. And they safety their checker. Okay, now we got some trouble, I don't know what we're gonna do now. I guess we could run away, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's nice.
Alright, you know, we're behind in the race. That's not good. How, how far behind are we?
Well, seventy-nine to sixty-eight.
Eleven.
Are there wasted pips on the one?
They got a little bit of wastage on the one point.
Yeah, I think Bill and Rick are point, are alluding to, it's not quite as bad as it looks, and right, and you know, not all race deficits are created equal. Our opponent has four checkers piled on the ace point, two on the two point.
I mean, as far as crossovers go, it's equal, really.
Right, yes, four crossovers equal. Uh, we may have an easier time filling our gap, right?
Yeah, yes.
Green.
Alright, that's one option, what else might we consider?
Nine to four, eight to six, uh, eight to two.
Nine to four, eight to two, that plugs the gap. Are there any plays where we might step out into the outfield and sit there? Like, you know, maybe like.
No, don't give him a direct shot.
Don't, you're saying, don't do it?
Don't give him a direct, uh-uh.
So... So maybe I won't even add that in there, nobody likes that play. What are the chances that we get a shot next turn?
Not that bad.
What could they roll that would leave us a shot?
Lots of stuff.
Yeah, let's name some.
Okay.
Six, one, six, two.
If it doesn't, if it doesn't have a one, or it doesn't have double ones, and it does have a four, a five or a six. It's quite a few.
Uh, five, one, six, one, six, two, six, four.
I think more than half the rolls should leave a shot. A direct shot.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Unless they, they break their nineteen, well, their six points to, to avoid leaving a shot next, so, yeah.
Yeah, they can definitely avoid leaving a shot with low numbers by breaking their board, but that's not bad, because that's just more wasted pips.
Yep.
Uh, but it's not all of them, because there's, any double works well for them, six, five, they hop over us, just like we could hop over them without leaving a direct. So they definitely do have a fair number that don't leave shots. I, I'm just tallying things up in the Slido, it's not really a voting option, I just wanted to use that to help us count. Am I missing any? Six, four, six, two, six, one.
Five, one, four, one.
Five, uh, oh, I see, five, three, they'll just break the six point.
Yeah, right, they can clear their six point. Um, I kinda think this is it. Ten rolls will leave a shot. That's not terrible. There are also several other roles. Six, three, they, they go straight to their six point, they'll play fifteen to six. Um, a lot of the roles. I think there are a lot of other rolls that don't leave a shot, but they're forced to use them very inefficiently if we hang back. Okay, name some. Um, five and anything other than a one. Uh, five, two, five, three, five, four, three, one, three, two, two, one. Those are all either collapsing the board or just moving things inefficiently that they don't have to do if we run. Yes. So I, I listed those as awkward rolls, five, four, five, three, five, two, four, three, four, two, three, two, three, one.
But that might be up, uh, offset by the fact that we, uh, are dumping checkers inefficiently with this roll if we don't come out from the twenty.
Well, if we do the nine, four, that's not inefficient, that's a hole we're happy to plug. Right, that half of it is good, the other half is not.
Yeah.
Okay, well, maybe we should vote. Alright, the voting is clear on the, we're gonna do the fun play, which is to hang back, try to get a shot. And we might get, we might get a couple of cracks at getting a shot. Okay, so.
Yes.
Let's go back and see. And we will write, uh, and look at twenty to nine is a triple whopper. Gives up way too much.
Man.
I don't get that.
It's because of the, it's because of the shot, shot equity that we have, and we're, we're behind in the race.
Yep.
Well, it looks like we're behind in the race, but there's so much wastage on his side.
Yeah, it, it looks like behind, we're behind in the race, but the thing is, we are actually still behind in the race, and there is wastage. But.
A couple, two extra guys on the one, it's not that much.
Yeah, so, yes.
The, the gap on the five is the bigger problem for them, I think, than the two extra guys on the ace point.
Actually, yes. Okay, look, they had, they rolled one of their awkward numbers, had to clear the six point, now we're, now we're looking better. Except, oh, that's no fun. Now, running is more attractive now because they just had to waste some pips.
Yep, and we get, we'll have only two crossovers, they'll have four.
Yeah, so I think twenty to nine is a, is a real contender, if we don't do that.
Yep. Yeah, if we don't, what's we gonna do instead?
Yeah, what do we do?
It would have to be nine, it'd be six to one and eight to two, right? What else is there?
There's stopping in the outfield somewhere.
Oh, yeah, of course, you know, you can't give them a shot, no, that can't be.
No.
You still don't wanna do that, okay?
I do.
Can you make an argument for doing that? Okay, go ahead.
Of course, you can make an argument for it, but.
No, I'm not saying I can, I wanna know if there is one. Oh. You, so you feel like you can't make an argument? I cannot make that argument. I, I think I cannot make that argument, I don't think we get any more shots.
I would move a five before I would move a six, I'll tell you that much.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I, I'm very doubtful that a triple whopper, zero-point-three blunder would suddenly become viable just because they wasted a few pips in their home, so, yeah.
Well, okay, so hold on a second on that score, um, they didn't just waste a few pips, they wasted seven pips, that's, that's quite a lot. Um, and, and they're going to be incurring more wastage later because the point that they cleared was their six point. Well, there's another important consideration, because I already was thinking about that. That's, we had a viable alternative, which we don't really now. Yeah, that's right. Now, what's, what's our play gonna be, it's, it's gonna look like this. Now, say you get that direct shot, you're gonna have a hard time cover, uh, pulling on that. Yeah, that's what I think the, the argument kinda boils down to.
Yep, well, yeah, good point, I hadn't thought about that, yeah.
Okay, let's cast our votes. You, you know, what happened to the gammon that we were supposed to win in this game?
That's gone.
Gone with the wind.
That's, that's the book I wanna write, the title is The Gammon That Got Away.
Yeah.
Alright, I think the votes are for twenty to nine. Are we blundering here? Let's find out. Yes, we got it wrong.
Oopsie.
Yeah.
Eight, two, six, one, is that much better, huh?
But before, the difference in win percentage between the two options was about fifteen percent, it was huge, now it's one percent. Yeah. Okay, they rolled double threes, now we have four, two to play, oh, this is, this is important.
Get them both in.
Not entirely convinced that bringing them both in is right. You wanted to wait four? I'm, I'm thinking about that, nine, five, eight, six. And then I think we should consider nine, seven, eight, uh, four.
Well, in that case, maybe even, maybe even eight, four, six, four.
Why?
Uh, yeah, maybe, okay, nine, five, eight, six, that's, that's the bring them in play. That's, that's an obvious candidate. The downside is this burgeoning gap on the four point, gaps on the four point are bad. Gaps on the three point are not bad when you have checkered on the six point. This is, this is really important stuff. I think the gap on the four point is not as bad as it is sometimes, because we, since we have no pips on the one, and we have a stack on the five, we have useful fours. Okay, that's a good point, um, and then I would like to counter that by saying, because we have a big stack on the two point, we will not be able to smooth by playing six to four. Or it will be harder for us to do that. So I think those cut in opposite directions.
Sorry, I, I didn't get that last argument.
Okay, so, let's say we, uh, we empty the four point, and then later we roll a two.
Yes.
Okay, well, it's not so clear that we would play six to four to fill the gap, because we should, we really should be taking checkers off the two points.
No, we wouldn't do that, we would take a checker off.
See, and Rick points out that because our, our one point is empty, we will definitely later be able to play fours by playing five to one, or play ones by playing five to four.
Uh-huh.
And I, I would say.
I would rather play the ones as two to one, I think, to unstack the two already.
Potentially, yeah. These are non-trivial considerations, I, I think these are very important to consider.
If you get several ones during the bear off, probably don't win anyway.
That's also a good point, yeah. Yes, we, we, we need, we need the big numbers in here. Which, actually, by the way, could be an argument for just bringing in.
It sets up double six, double five, and. It sets up double six, double five in either order for the next two rolls beautifully.
Well, double sixes is always going to play good. Anytime, Bill Powell, anytime you're playing me and you want to just let me roll double six in a bear off, I'll be happy to accept it.
After I'm cashew and you're on the bar and I got the six point made, okay.
Now, if we put a fourth checker on the five point, then double five will work fully as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, if we haven't voted yet, let's do it. We might be moving quickly after this. This might be our last serious decision that we have to make. Okay, nine, five, eight, six. If this is wrong, I don't think it's gonna be wrong by too much. And it's right, okay?
Perfect.
Great. All right, they brought a checker in, took one off. All right, we're gonna start uh peeling the checkers off. I'm not worried about the gap on the three.
Interestingly, the second best move there was uh eight, four, six, four, and not a nine, seven.
Somebody mentioned that. I don't remember.
Yeah, mention eight, four, six, four.
Okay.
All right, let's just, let's take checkers off. Gotta have a good reason for not taking checkers off.
Yep.
Oh.
The little fours only gets one off.
Yeah, all right. Well, this is, this is one of these good news, bad news rolls, right? You you pick up a, you want to get one off. Yeah, my friend Chuck Bauer calls this a freight mover. But it doesn't move them where you want it to go.
It sets you up for the next roll.
It goes off for sure. I'd get four.
Take off the four and then what?
Two, five, ones, and one, six, two.
That gets two, six, twos, and one, five, one.
You'd rather a five on the two point?
Yes.
Yeah, that looks balanced.
Bill Pell said something different than either of those you did, Jason. Oh, I'm starting. What did you want, Bill?
Um. Four, four goes off.
Yeah.
Six to two twice, five to one once.
Okay, that I I do have that in there.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
I I'm sorry, I, uh, why aren't we moving three checkers off the six point? Or I get to put one on the ace, never mind.
Okay, I got the voting open. You can cast a vote if you like now.
I don't think it'll help or hurt, make much difference, but three of the four moves are the same on the two you have up there. If you want to just show what it looks like after those three.
That's that's a good way of doing it. So one, two, three. Okay, so those three are are more or less forced, and now you need one more four to play from this position. Do you want to play five to one, or do you want to play six to two? That's that's the question issue.
Five, one.
Five to one.
Six to two.
Six to two.
Like six to two, um, the, it plays, double fives will play better.
I like that answer. So Bill made a point, uh, um, Bill Powell made a point earlier and said that, you know, if we roll a bunch of ones, we're we're dead meat anyway. So when, this is, this is what's called a bowl off. Uh, that's what Danny Kleiman called it. In a bowl off, you're in trouble. You're behind. And you have to just assume you're gonna roll big numbers, because if you roll a bunch of small numbers, it doesn't matter. You're gonna lose anyway.
Yep, we need Schwaber to hit three home runs.
That's right, we need Schwaber to hit the three home runs. Um, anybody cast a vote? There's no votes in here yet.
I voted.
There's.
I voted.
Oh, ten votes in.
Oh, it's not showing up for me.
Forty.
Uh.
Sixty, forty split.
Yep.
Okay, I see. All right, so I think that that means the last one is going for six to two, is that right? Okay, let's do it. Okay, we were right. It's a very small amount. It's a small amount because we're, you know, we're an underdog here. Okay, should we rip? Rip two off?
It's horrible.
Yep.
Rip two off.
Yep.
Yep, it can't be better than getting two off.
You know, it it does get us down to ten checkers, right? And then if we take two more off, then we're a real threat. Once I'm down to eight, I can win anything.
Double sixes twice, sure.
Oh, no.
Now you got double fours, oh. This is ugly. I I think this is when you go six, five, six, three. You need double fives or double sixes on one of your next two rolls anyway. Those get the full benefit of it.
I think safely leave one on the six point. You'll probably roll a six.
Yeah.
Well, that's a good point, too.
So Janet, are you considering something like six, three, two, one?
Yeah.
Okay, let's put that in there. I like that, I like that choice. Six, three, two, one. Um.
I only see one option. To vote. There, no. There we go.
Uh, we do have, we are down to ten checkers. So we do need to get who off. We can't afford to miss.
This is a good distribution for that.
This is a better distribution for getting checkers off. The downside of this one is double fives will not be nearly as useful.
I don't think any of it's gonna matter because they're gonna double us back.
The, it's the, it's post Crawford. They're one away, yeah.
Never mind, sorry.
If the money game, that's a, that's a valid point to make.
Money game, right, we would have, we would just give up.
They would have doubled us back a long, a while back, I think.
Yeah. Okay, six, three, two, one. And the equity difference is gonna be small because there's very little at stake.
Correct.
Okay, so this is.
Six, five, six, three. Wow.
Yeah, it's it's hard to measure these differences. Okay, we'll rip two off. We still got a shot, right? We need, we just need two sets.
So so getting them off the six point was right.
They got double, they got double fours twice in their bear.
So. I I I want to just say.
We got them once, but they weren't good for us.
I've always remembered a Backgammon video I watched. One, because it was entertaining, and it was Justin Knoll who put.
Oh, he does great stuff, yeah.
He does, and he had a he's kind of humorous, right, in his delivery, and I remember, I'll never forget this one video where he constantly drilled it into your brain with an amusing, get it off the six point. And so I've always like, he kept going back to saying that in that funny way, and I've never forgotten it, and that's why in in these situations, I always think of that video, get it off, you you just get it off the, get them off the six point, right?
Yeah.
So. Anyway. Justin Knoll has quite a few good videos out there.
Uh, yeah, yeah, he does.
In 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 YouTube world.
What's his name? Justin?
Justin Knoll, N O W E L L.
Oh, okay.
If you got two hundred bucks an hour, he'll be happy to give you lessons, too. He's a funny guy. I've seen him in a few tournaments. He's an American. He lives in London with his uh British wife, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
This ended the match, they, because they were one away. So we played a five point two, two for the match. That's five point two, two is really good. That's like master two level.
Justin.
We did very well there. Uh. I have a, I have a quick idea for, we we still have about twenty minutes left. Um, but I want to do something just a little bit different for the remaining time, which is, um, you know, we've, we've been doing this format for quite a while now. I I think it's been fairly successful. I just want to see if we can brainstorm some ideas. Do we want to keep doing it this way? Do we want a different format? Um, any sort of ideas that uh anybody is interested in?
Well, well, Jason, you and I talked about this before. I don't have, I don't have the skill set to do it. But I, on YouTube, I do get to watch, kind of like what Bill was saying, lots of different matches. And it's really fun when the pros slow down because a roll is so challenging. You know, and and they take a few extra seconds to try to decide what they're gonna do.
Yeah.
I've always thought it'd be fun if of sending you those clips and then having you kind of review them with this group, but I just don't have the skill set to cut and paste it. Um.
Okay, well, so I I'll give you an alternative for that, Adam, is uh, I think you just need to send me a link to the, to the video and a timestamp so that I can go find the position. That's that's good enough.
I think, I think.
YouTube video, hit share. And then just send it to Ja- uh, Jason.
Right.
I think there's, YouTube has a a feature now that where you can clip parts of a video and save them in your profile, and then you can just send, share those clips. Uh, instead of the entire video, I think. I never really used the the.
Well, I'll try to do that.
But I remember seeing that.
What do people think of that idea, though, in terms of analyzing some of those tournament plays?
Yeah, it'd be nice to do it every once in a while, but maybe not every week.
Right, I agree with that.
Yeah, it could be, it could be a good thing. It's, you know, especially, I kind, that'd be nice to do, like, um. You know, when we finish a game instead of starting a new one. Uh, there's something in the chat where somebody says, uh, Anka says, do you consider Anki cards? So I've started using Anki cards, and I've I've been creating them out of uh, uh, the positions where I've made blunders. Um, and I send them to Rayner Berkel. And he makes them for me. Uh, it cost me on the order like something like fifty cents per position.
Can you explain Anki card? I don't understand.
Flashcards for, flashcards for.
Flashcard, okay.
Yeah.
Anchor positions, is that what you mean by Anki cards?
It's a name of an app.
Okay, thank you.
But but the description of of Backgammon flashcards is the, is the best way of thinking about it. And so. So for instance, I'll, I've taken a bunch of my positions where I've made errors. Uh, I have, uh, I have infinitely many of these, um, positions where I've made.
Impossible. As a mathematician, I claim that's impossible.
You don't know how many mistakes I make. And I, I.
Jason, it cannot be infinite.
It it certainly feels that way. And I, I, so I send them to Rayner Berkel, and he makes these cards for me. And now I have these flashcards of errors that I've made in actual matches, and I can I can look at it and say, okay, well, would I make the same mistake again? Have I learned something from uh, from stakes? Uh, it it's, it's really kind of fun to do.
I've bought some of his decks, uh, folks, buy some standard decks, and I I own got a hundred probably dollars worth of Anki decks. Some of our some of our Dirk Sheemans practice decks, um. One of them is just, so to explain what they are, it's real simple. Like, I have a second roll deck, and that's a great one because it just shows you uh, second roll positions and the dice roll, and you you have to pick the move, so you're looking at the flashcard. And then it instantly tells you if you're right or wrong, um. Uh, it's a really good way to, I, I, you'd think I was a good player if I actually used this as often as I do, but uh, apparently I can't remember anything, but.
Okay, so I can show you. I I have Anki running on my, on my.
Yeah, put it on the, um.
Okay, can you see? So this is, this is Anki. And I don't have a ton right now. I've, I've downloaded this. There's a few free decks, and so, uh. So let's look at like a Dirk Sheemon. So if I click on this, this is from the U B C final in twenty twenty one. Dirk Sheemon made some mistakes. All right, let's click study now. All right, what you get is, you get the, you get the board. And you get, uh, all right, this is a cube action, so no double take, no double pass, double take, double pass. So you're the black checkers and you're bearing off to the right. Uh, and oh, and white is on roll. And so the question is, should white double? And should black take?
Interesting. Thank you. So we, we suppose a vote, A, B, C, or D now?
Sure, let's, yeah, let's vote. What would you do?
I would do B.
No double pass.
I would not double.
Actually, almost on the borderline of too good to double.
Okay.
Double take.
Double take.
Double pass.
No double pass.
Because black is so far back in his home board.
That's true.
It's almost gonna be impossible for him to get out.
And a pair of six to get out, that's a lot to overcome.
Yeah.
Okay, and does the score matter? You know, white is bu- is ahead in the match, white is five ahead.
Semi-pilot is not, not that big a deal. That's almost the same as even, even.
Blunder with the champions, this is called. All right, I'm gonna pick one. I I have no idea. This, these are really hard. I'm, I'll just, I'll just guess, uh. I'm gonna guess double take. So I click on this.
What is?
And what, how do I read this?
It's a double take?
Uh, no double take.
No double take. Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, but not by much.
Why, why would black take that?
Um, because black has good forward structure here.
Yes.
Okay.
Wait, it, white is cube. Oh, I thought black was cubing because.
White, white is on.
Oh, okay. Okay. And what's interesting is it shows the score matrix, right? And it shows you what, is this would have been a double and a take or not.
So at different scores. So if white is, okay, so the score that we are actually at here, white is five away and black is seven away, so that's right here, no double.
No double take, right.
But if it's, uh, if it's, the score is reversed, if white is seven away and black is five away, then it's double pass.
The exact opposite.
Yeah. Okay, now. Uh, then at the bottom, there's like there's some four buttons you can push. You can say, all right, I want to see this again, or or you could say, oh, this is hard, or this was good, or or maybe you could say this was easy. All right, I don't think this was easy. I'm gonna pick good. And what that does is it basically puts this flashcard back in the deck and it'll come up again. So let's click good. And then another one will come up. All right, black has double ones to play.
So all these, all these things are gonna be, um. Whether we're gonna, what, what the cube action? Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Jason, I'm sorry, can you enlarge that just a little bit, please?
I don't know, how's that? I can't make the board any bigger.
No, that's good right there.
Okay, yeah. Okay, now, one nice thing with the checker play is, um, if you, if you move your mouse, can you see my mouse?
Yes.
Yes.
You move your mouse over onto one of the candidate plays. It's not doing it.
Does it do it for you?
Not because you're sharing your screen.
Yes, some of these, when you mouse over, it shows you what the play looks like, but I guess it's not doing that here. Okay. So bar twenty, so you have to enter with two. Are you gonna step up to the twenty-three point and hit, or?
Yes.
Or make the five point?
Uh, interesting.
I think.
Twenty-three twice.
Three.
Now, the bottom point. That twenty-four, come in twenty-four and then hit and make the twenty-three point.
I think it has to be A or C, which means it's probably gonna be B or D.
It's D.
Since I think it should be C, Frank proposed it and say that's wrong.
All right, I heard a lot of people say C. Let's click on this. Yeah, wrong.
It's A.
Yeah.
Wow, interesting.
So I think five point is very valuable.
What's the right answer, eh?
My experience, Jason, with the reason these cards are so awesome, and this is a bigger deal, especially early in the game. It shows you at each score what is the correct movement. In this case, making the bar, or making the five point is correct in every situation.
That's right, yeah.
In the two roll positions, it's really, really interesting, because you can have wildly different. Uh. There's, there's frequently a difference that it gammon go, gammon save, or D I T. What is the appropriate play? Uh, and it's easy to see when you're looking at it like this, because that's why I find them so useful. I can instantly go, oh, okay. Gammon go, I should have, I should have ran, or or something, you know, so that's, uh. Anyway, I found the cards useful. I'm happy I invested in them, even though I probably don't study as often as I should.
I love mine. I use it a lot.
Yeah. Um.
Okay, anyway.
So the, the right move is to make the five.
Make the five point, yeah, you 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 see it here. Everything else is a triple whopper.
Or worse, yes.
Hey, but the way I figured is, is uh, the reason this is in this deck is because Dirk Sheemon made this error. So if Dirk Sheemon made this mistake, what, what hope do I have?
What did, can we know what, what place he made?
Um.
All we know is he didn't make A.
Is, is that what you're saying? That's right.
Okay, he may have made C, but we don't know, okay. Interesting.
Jason, as an alternative, um. To the format we've been using, uh, what about a shoeette?
Um, yes, we could do that, um. I'd have to think about the logistics of that. That would be I'm not sure. I mean, in principle, yes, you you could do something like that. The, I I guess, Janet, the the main issue is that we tend to barely get through one game in a session. So if, you know, if one person's sitting in the box, well, they're, you know, they're always there, and there's not gonna be a lot of turnover. Um.
Well, you would be the person in the box.
Oh, my gosh, I don't mean.
And then the rest of us would.
I don't need, I don't need that.
What's the best way to unseat you?
Uh huh, yeah.
Which would be kind of fun.
I I suppose so, but that, that's a lot of pressure, too. Yeah, it's an interesting idea. Anyway. Yeah, go ahead.
I truly like the format we have. I've learned a lot from it.
Great.
I look forward to it.
Yeah, one of the things I do like about it is with the voting system that we have on Slido, it's anonymous. That, okay, yes, we know that somebody voted for a particular play, but you don't, you'll never know who, right?
I just don't have a choice for, for voting.
Oh, are you unable to use the Slido?
Yeah.
Well, ninety-six.
Yeah, some, some, it doesn't work.
I write in, in the chat box when I'm here.
Yeah, that's fine, too. Um, okay, listen, I'm, I'm gonna wrap this up. First, I'm gonna mute everybody, and then I'm gonna give the goodbye. Okay, thank you for joining the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Club Study Session for July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. If you're interested in joining our study session or our weekly tournament, send an email to midatlanticvg@gmail.com. All right.